How about an audio check, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
This meeting is being recorded.
I'm ready to go. It's called meetings order, it's time to the regions.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Thorne.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Nibbick.
Here.
Welcome home, Joe. Okay, uh, once again, Governor Pritzker has extended the gubernatorial order allowing remote attendance of board members at public meetings. We do have one trustee attending remotely this evening, that is Mr. Harney, the rest of the trustees is in the building. Uh, with Mr. Harney being remote, we will have all votes as a roll call again. And other than that, we will continue with the agenda as published, uh, minutes, we have approval of the minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, or twenty-two.
So move the athlete. Second, Brainerd.
Moved by the athlete, seconded by Brainerd, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of August fifteenth? Chief, I got a question, was pumpkin donuts on the twentieth? This is August? Yeah, we've got a Saturday.
No, it's not on Saturday.
On Saturday?
It was on Friday, the nineteenth, that was.
Okay.
I wasn't telling them.
Yeah, that's right.
Friday, nineteen.
Okay, is that correct? Jumped at me in my mind, okay. Right back date to the nineteenth, the twentieth, there being no other changes, corrections, roll call please. Uh, Mr. Nibbick.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Uh, we're having a little difficulty hearing you had in volume up, John.
Somebody talk.
Uh, Ed, could you give us a test?
Okay. How about now, test, test.
Uh, Kyle?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear Kyle louder later. Are you in the back of the car again, Ed?
I got my volume all the way up. Can you hear me at all? The what?
There's a delay in your response.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll respond with a thumbs up at the same time.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, oh, uh, five of four permanent votes, six of four hundred bucks, no negative votes, so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, one thing before I go on, yes, uh, according to the ordinance, section one dash five dash four F of the village code, there's a very in the public comments after the finance director segment of the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the board with comments at that time may do so by placing their name in the sign up sheet located at the back of the room at any time prior to that segment of the meeting. Okay, also, if you have electronic transmitting or receiving devices, please put them in the offered vibrate mode. All right, now moving on, the president's report, we've taken care of the proclamation from the governor on the COVID nineteen. Uh, the next item is the appointment of the Board of Appeals for a building code. It's not, you all recall, we do have building code section which we do enforce. At this point, anybody wishing to appeal the decision of the building code, we don't have a Board of Appeals. It is highlighted and is mentioned in our ordinances that they have that right to take it to a Board of Appeals after they get a written response from the building politician. So if they've got a question on a, uh, issue of a building permit, they have to ask in writing for verification of why that permit is what it is. And then if they would like to appeal that writing, then they need to have a Board of Appeals for them to come forward. So that's what we've got here on the agenda this evening about the appointment of a building code of a Board of Appeals. Okay? Uh, I believe the state statutes have a procedure and suggest a Board of Appeals, but we don't have the type of qualified individuals available at this point to put on there, you know, an electrician, a plumber, those type of things, we've not had anyone volunteer in the village for those type of trades that would serve on a Board of Appeals. So there's been a suggestion that, uh, we appoint the Board of Trustees as the Board of Appeals for any appeal to a building code issue. It has also been suggested that the DNC could utilize that. I've got a bit of an issue that I thought of over that one during the weekend, and that is the people taking an appeal to this board, once that appeal is done, if it is not in their favor, then the only place they have to golf is to the courts for, you know, to unify the thing now, just by them. I've got an issue with this board giving a sub group the responsibility that could entail us and the loss and cost of spots. I think that that decision should be with this group at the end. I'm just, uh, that's my thought, so as you think about it, just think about that one too. But Mark is here, he can explain what's going on, Miss Depple is here, she can provide the information from the building section on that. But I want you to know that's what this discussion is about, the city. And this is why I ran. So, you know, setting up the Board of Appeals, Mark, you want to give them the background on the story for, uh,
in fact, it's come up in particular, you know, several months ago, we had a discussion about enforcing, uh, building codes and, uh, uh, the village building officials identified, uh, ten or so properties in which she had been unable to resolve questions about the need for or the scope of a permit. Uh, one of those, uh, individuals has, has inquired about how to appeal a decision made by the building official concerning, uh, his request for some, uh, uh, departures from the strict letter of the, uh, building code to suit his cir, his particular circumstances. And, and the way he could do that is by, uh, appealing a, a negative or adverse decision or a decision he feels is adverse uh, by the building official, uh, to some other board. Uh, it, so you can tell, number one, it hasn't come up in ages and ages where we would have something in place. But all the same, every building code, residential code, the general building code, the property maintenance code, and then so on and so on, everyone's got the same section that there should be an avenue of local appeal, uh, before it gets to a litigation setting, uh, to have someone else just take a look at what the building official has decided and whether or not a modification or a misinterpretation or however they're going to characterize it ought to be looked at. Uh, the, each of those codes suggests that a board like that should, uh, consist of persons who are qualified by experience and training to talk about building construction matters, uh, but that, uh, is a little limiting. Uh, and, and, uh, you know, it's been hard to find volunteers for, uh, different positions in the village, uh, so, um, and in, in another jurisdiction I'm familiar with, uh, they, they just appointed the Board of Trustees to handle that and at least have some means of getting a second look, uh, at a particular situation. Uh, between the Board of Trustees of the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's really no, no legal difference, but the mayor has commented that this would be a final decision for the property owner from which they only further relief would be through court proceedings. And, and, uh, so the president has suggested that you think about the Board of Trustees handling that. Uh, but the, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, or, or you, you could try to recruit an independent body for the building code Board of Appeals. Uh, but something should be done. Get something in place. And, uh, it's, uh, it's not a job that's going to tax anybody, it's been years and I, I can't think of a prior instance that, that covers sometimes, uh, that, uh, it's come up, but, uh, you know, you're, it, it will super later and there's one perhaps that will come, uh, right away. So, any questions about that?
So, I got a question, Mr. Pritzker. As President Pickett mentioned, if the, if the current Board of Trustees were to become the Board of Appeals, then the next recourse for any individual pending a decision of the Board of Appeals quotation, Board of Trustees, would be to go to a court to have it overturned or resolved, correct?
That's correct, but just to be clear, it does, whoever you appoint will make a final decision.
Okay, my question was going to be if we were to appoint, if we were to have a Board of Appeals and, and they made a decision, if that decision was not favorable to the resident, would they then come to the Board of Trustees?
No.
Like, that's why I wanted to understand that.
That's why, that's what, I'm glad you asked, the answer is no. Whoever it is that constitutes the Boards of, the Board of Appeals will be the final decision at the local level. Period. There will be no further recourse to the Board of Trustees if you appoint someone else.
I think I might have misunderstood there because I thought at first you said that at that point it goes to the interim or it would be with the, the whoever's appointed like that board, and then if they denied it or whatever, it would then come to us.
No.
Well.
No, you could just, you could, you could make that Board of Appeals this board, and then there's just one step. But there's always only one step, whoever it is that's appointed as a Board of Appeals under the building code makes the final local decision, period.
Let me ask you this then, in case of this, till if we can't get volunteers or you can't get individuals to step up and, and volunteer for it, um, can it be done in an interim, you know, perspective, I mean, where if the board did it, the trustees did it, it would only be in the interim till they get a, uh,
Well, you.
Appeals board.
The answer is yes, I wouldn't use that terminology, but yes, in other words, I would suggest if you, you take action now and make it the Board of Trustees and you're able then to, uh, identify, uh, persons who would serve that purpose, then we would modify it or amend it at that time. Rather than say, well, we'll do an interim and in three months we'll appoint a permanent, I would avoid that.
But in reality, it is an interim.
Well, not necessarily. You haven't found anyone yet.
But I mean, if you do.
You could simply amend it at that time and say, you know what, we, we, we can make this work another way, let's just amend it.
Another, another comment would be if, um, if the Board of Trustees makes decisions for the village and the residents and ultimately this board or, or whatever reports in the future make that final decision, would it be in the interest of the village long term that the Board of Trustees be the Board of Appeals? In this example, yeah, and I, yeah, so because that way, I don't want to say it's more official, but you know, planning and zoning is official, they have certain things they have to look at and recommendation to give to the village board, but it's the village board ultimately makes a makes a decision based on a motion and based on voting, which it's used the word final, but it's, it's the decision, right?
Right.
So would it, would it, would it be, would it be best that the Board of Trustees become the Board of Appeals, Board of Building Code?
Well, Mr. Depple, you.
Just to kind of fill you, both thing to give you a better understanding hopefully of building codes. Um, building codes are not like the laws of the police department where you're innocent of proven guilty. Building code is based on the King's law, you're guilty and so it's a bit innocent. And so in doing building codes, the, the building code and the international residential code, the international building code, those are all considered minimum codes. So for anyone to appeal an order, they have to prove that what they are offering is a higher level of safety than what is in code. You're not like a zoning variance where the code says fifteen feet and they appeal if they want twelve feet because of some circumstance. It's not the same thing. You would have to have at least the same or higher level of safety based on the code to allow any appeal to be approved, just so you folks are aware of that. So many of the ordinances that I've written to many communities over the years have had the village board be the Board of Appeal, but there's a separate Board of Appeals for every single code adopted. So that's why what I gave you was just an example of the text, it could be modified in adopting, because I'm moving towards trying to get the codes updated before I'm a two thousand and three, trying to get it up into the twenty-one to the twenty national electoral code. So that's why I've given you a very strong is to show what we, we appeal are in each of those different codes. And then the proposed text should decide to go with the village Board of Trustees as your Board of Appeals, which is fine with me. Um, Kevin, not that I would, my husband, in four years of code enforcement, in building enforcement, had to appeal. And in those two instances, they couldn't prove them, quite frankly, didn't understand what they were appealing. It was just those particular instances, um, I, I think I know the, the situation that Mr. Schuster mentioned that is a separate section of the code that's not actually in the building code, um, it's a separate chapter requirement. And, um, so that's, hopefully that will help you understand the situation with appeal, um, dealing with the, 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 so difficult. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I, I would just say it sounds awful like the discussion we have a pre-advisory board, we're the exact same idea that almost the exact same thing that Mr. Schuster is saying that, we just made the, go with for the Board of Appeals which we've not done in the four or five years since we've done that, I'm beginning to come up, so just for consistency, it seems like the logical way of going, since you struggle to find volunteers, we can bind up the two missions, we pulled a couple of other committees up because we couldn't find volunteers, but it just seemed like most logical ways to make this board, if there were any questions, I'm certain we could bring in an expert witness or other, I shouldn't say witness, but you know, to give the board the expertise they needed, so it just seemed like the simple, the way of going.
Have a motion.
One, one other question, one other question, if, um, just so I'm clear with what Miss Depple said, would, would one, would the, if the village board becomes the Board of Appeals and the village board listens to the appeals from all, all of the
Yes.
Codes, all of the names that potentially.
It could be, right, it makes sense to set it up that way. Right, and you say, i- if you look at each separate code and each is a separate chapter in your, in your, uh, village code, each one calls for a Board of Appeals. But you simply named the Board of Trustees to act under each of those sections.
And then to Mr. Nibbick's point, because I know it makes reference here, uh, as a qualification, the Board of Appeals shall consist of members who are qualified by experience and training to pass on matters pertaining to building construction that are not employees in the jurisdiction. So if it came to if it came to a resident approaching the Board of Appeals to say they wanted to do something a certain way and the Board of Appeals did not have that expertise, then we could go out and retain, retain someone to come in to that specific entity, plumber, technician, or.
So, so that being said, I'd like to make the motion that we correct Mr. Schuster to draft an ordinance to appoint the Board of Trustees as the official building code Board of Appeals for the village, if you're correct wording there, Mark, that's fine.
Move by Nibbick, seconded by Thorne to authorize the village attorney to draft an ordinance creating the Board of Appeals for the building code section to consist of the Board of Trustees. Can you put any comments, questions, or discussion?
Uh, Mr. Pickett, uh, Ms. Depple just informed me, and I'm going to add a part of comment in the, in this period now, that she knows, if I say it, I may not represent the time, so I default to Ms. Depple to mention what's your thought.
Yes. Unless we need something passed by the next meeting, I am in the process of putting together the adoption, uh, ordinance for updating the codes which will have that change implemented in each and every single code to make the village board worth the appeal. So I don't know if this is something that they could have done three.
It does.
Okay, I think we can have a, a separate one because.
Right. What, what's your timeframe, do you think?
I was hoping to have it here for the first meeting in October.
Okay, uh, well, maybe that'll be soon. I'll talk to the voters, President.
All right, any other comments, questions, discussion? Now, being now, roll call please, Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Nibbick.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Six permanent votes, no negative votes in motion, so passes. Okay, the only other thing for the present report, just to remind everybody, October second, this move of the mayor. October ninth will be the rainy day, we will gather at San Appitino Park, oh, I don't know, hour before sunrise. It'll be seven thirty, eight o'clock, and we'll have a, a route picked up, tour of the hills of the hollow. Along with the hill climb challenge. Details to follow. Okay, what's your point? You expect me to follow that?
Sure.
Uh, I have no report. Okay, thank you, Tony. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, no report to see, thank you, uh, planning report.
No report to see.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster, engineer report, Mr. Steele.
Good evening, uh, in your board packet is, there's a ComEd permit request application. Uh, this is just basically replacing, uh, deteriorated cable throughout the Walnut Hill subdivision, which is basically Jamestown, uh, road court, that whole subdivision area, so did my review and it all looks good, so everything's within easements. So just looking for board approval.
We have a motion to approve the ComEd work order, I believe their general work order is thirty-seven oh seven.
So move, Harney.
Second, yeah, moved by Harney, seconded by, approved ComEd's work order thirty-seven oh seven. The work consisted of replacing approximately seventeen thousand nine hundred ninety-five feet electrical cable, sound plug. Are you guys have trouble with outages up there?
Our power will go out less often?
After this one, yes.
It's the old.
Yep, I would say that's all, well over three miles of cable. All right, we have a motion, we have the motion, that's right, there's Harney and, uh, the athlete, right, roll call please. Mr. Nibbick.
Aye.
Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Six of four hundred bucks, no negative votes in motion, so carries. Thank you, gentlemen, anything else, Mr. Steele?
Uh, I believe that's it, except for later on for two oh eight crane drives, you need me.
All right, thank you, Joe. Uh, Director of Finance, Mr. Vannan, requests a motion for approval of the warrants, the amount of one hundred thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-five cents. Through. Hoffman.
Sorry.
Yeah. Moved by Hoffman, or motion to accept, approve the warrants of August, September. Since I'll get this. Oh, it's made by Hoffman, seconded by the athlete. Any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? Now, being now, roll call please. Mr. Nibbick.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Six permanent votes, no negative votes in motion, so passes, thank you, John.
That's all I have in this time.
All right, thank you. Uh, okay, comments from the public. Joe, could you shut that counter for me real quick?
Do that.
Put you to work first day of that.
All right.
All right, first one we have is Elizabeth Morrison.
Here.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here because yesterday I was at a barbecue in High Point Lane where I live and have lived for forty-six years. I came here from Inverness, which is a beautiful area. And I thought that it was astounding how lovely this community is and how nature oriented we are. All of a sudden, we're becoming like garbage, even to consider U-Haul moving in to seventy-two in a property that has been abandoned and unused for all the forty-six years that I've lived. I don't know where it came from, from the sheriff's sale maybe for this big greedy company. They need to move their operations someplace else. It doesn't belong here. It is disgusting, even to consider it. I also want to bring up Burlow. Behind Burlow, side by side contiguous with Burlow, you have the homes of an old family used to be, used to live there, the Crichtons and the Goss. I went to buy a mattress at Burlow recently and I was appalled and a crap, excuse my language, but that's what it is. You, it really needs to have the, I forget the terminology, but when you have a hound chasing people away, broken down cars, everything, it is disgusting. And yet you as an inhabitant here, dare you put your wheels of a car on the grass? You will be absolutely reprimanded for that. So why is this allowed? It's just, and then we have of course spring law. I remember when Platte sold out and moved from there. And the dirt movers and everything else went on for a whole year. And people deluded themselves saying this is going to be great. And I know we needed the revenue, but we were a little slow in Sleepy Hollow and getting on the game there. We were looking for revenue because carpenters will and and West Dundee came in and took it out of Monroe's. That's how clever we are. We can't let this happen with U-Haul. It's wrong. It doesn't belong here and it will devalue your properties. It's more like, yeah. That's all I've got to say right now. And I just heard about this yesterday. I'm asleep. I'm so angry.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, uh. Ed, do you need write?
Edie Reese, yes. Um, I am also a resident of Sleepy Hollow for twenty-two years. I just wanted to bring up some points that I found on your website under your code books and things like that. Most importantly, the land use for these parcels must be compatible with the character of the village. Furthermore, it should not unduly impinge upon the adjacent residential land uses, at least not more than the target store directly across the street from a residential area does. The commercial land use should comply with high standards of visual quality and environmental performance. Also, due allowance shall be made for existing conditions, the conservation of property values, and the directions of building development to the best interest of the entire village. Unfortunately, I do not believe that the village is looking at this correctly. You are not considering the residents that live adjacent to this property, which I am one of them. I lived here for twenty-two years. That parcel has been for sale for forty-seven years. There was a home on the parcel that eventually literally fell apart and was taken down. I am opposed to this. I can't believe the village would want something like this in your backyard. I am scared. My daughter is very nervous knowing that there will be a storage facility next to us. There is no more security. I feel very violated. The village would even consider this. I feel the revenue that you will be getting for it is cents on the dollar compared to our safety. And it's unfortunate that the village is feeling this way and not considering our opinions and what you're doing to our village.
Reese, uh, Mr. Cobb.
Hi, my name is Mr. Cobb. I live at nine forty-one Willow. Uh, I'd just like to say I'm disappointed and dissatisfied with the village's decision to place spoils of clay and rock atop my neighbor's swale that is known to always have standing water due to a failed culvert. This has not allowed a water flow recent to the recently installed repaired water collection points along Willow. This flood has now become mosquito infested and the oil is oozing into the standing water from the clay. Uh, acid carry forms of bacteria, uh, not to mention it is very unsafe for my kids. You no longer use that area of our land. This flooding has caused erosion damage to our landscaping. I was then further disappointed to learn that the village does not communicate processing the invasion to involve homeowners. This has caused much confusion and unnecessary anxieties as to why the proposed drainage repair was not completed as described in the last one. Hope the village and Board of Trustees find it absolutely necessary to see to it that this is prepared to the same standards that it holds all village residencies to. I would also add that I oppose the new proposed order to see.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, Mr.
Where do you live?
Where do you?
I'm going to stay after in short. Um, I'm going to release next, community of all graduation of the line. Um, my comments tonight are about things for the facility, but also more specifically about the conduct communications from the PCC and Sleepy Hollow Village Board and also our attorney surrounding the team and incoming business. I also am home of the July twenty-fifth public hearing, the biggest thing in the Beachview District. I'm a state of the world president. At the August first uh, going forward, Mrs. Decker presented her first reports to the board and I was surprised to hear that she said no one who approves the language changes that attend the public hearing, when at least during that public hearing, she reminded the attendees that this was not only provided upon the board on that business suit, but on the language edition itself. I was also surprised the board's president who were at that meeting, Mark, public hearing, didn't remind her of this at the August first meeting. Attendees wanted to share their reasons, but were not given that opportunity. Later in the same August first meeting, trustee Prano shared the thought on what he used language. And the village attorney said that no application had yet been provided to the village for that substance to be itself, so then to her, I find it highly unlikely that the village attorney did not move in, save thirty. And he, the villagers who follow, took money only for this year, I believe it's five thousand dollars. He's also the same friend who outright purchased that Friday through April, June of twenty-two, to build this one, this all on, without having invited for that village to participate. I think that's very unhealthy.
Okay, moving on with the rest of the agenda. Uh, trustee reports roads and parks, Mr. Hardy.
I understand there's an electronic delay, but can you still understand me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, motion if you want me to stop here. Last week I met with Mrs. Decker, the building inspector with Trinity Landscaping, and we met at two oh eight Crane Court. The purpose was for the permitting of a two-car parking area located at the top of their property. Uh, before getting too far into the construction aspects of it, some concerns became quite apparent. Can can these parking spaces be built in the village right away? What about liability concerns for the future? What about maintenance concerns? Uh, what about, uh, snow plowing? Uh, on the court, it's a very narrow road there. Uh, so these concerns, I think, needed to be addressed before we actually get into the actual construction. And it was decided to ask input from possibly the building inspector, village engineer, attorney, and fourth. So if they would have any input to proceed with this, I think it's definitely needed.
Okay, Mr. Decker.
Um, so I provided you with G I S views. Um, this one, which shows the whole effect of Crane Court. And I tried to mark out granted it's in ten approximately where they wish with this, which would be um, coming in on a crane drive, it would be before their mailbox. And they're looking, coming right in where the area is quite narrow on Crane Court. They want to build a retaining wall that the plans that were submitted with the application are in your tablet. It shows how they wish to be drug it. We also had communications today about the similarity to the drive, which happened several years ago. Um, it's my opinion that they really don't relate because in their case, the driveway fully came off of a green space of the village and did not encompass the actual village's route as this does. With that, I'm going to defer to village engineer Steele for his explanation and expertise.
Yeah, as Barb explained, is they're planning the two-car garage or uh, spaces. Basically, their idea is, I don't know if any of you know the area. Uh, there's the topographic map that the applicant Trendy had included in on the application. Is it steeps off pretty well. Um, they haven't provided any elevations as far as how high that retaining wall is going to be. Obviously, they're going to be need a retaining wall there. Um, uh, in addition is we'll need some kind of tiebacks more than likely, depending on what kind of elevations uh, and height of the wall, just so it doesn't tip over. So it's just one other thing that the village should consider, at least as far as liability, if they do allow it. Uh, making sure that they're not liable for anything if car happens to topple over in case the wall fails, so. Otherwise, is they include it in just a kind of a rough idea, at least as far as what they're planning.
Like initially, the proposal is to just put a crush base over the top of it instead of pavement that's required for ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash eight.
Okay. We've got three or four others in that neighborhood that are tied on.
Yeah.
The edge of the road there and after. This isn't the first one up there.
Question, attorney Schuster, based on, you know, it's a different situation than the one on Timberwood. Be able to write up an agreement with them that resolves the village from any liabilities that may be faced?
That could be done, uh, if if all the other circumstances. I mean, I'm I'm just hearing some of this detail for the first time, but depending on how it all works, what, you know, the one of the conditions of the other agreement was that there'd be absolutely no parking on the street, on the, on the actual right of way of Timber Drive. So that seems to me right off the bat, that's, that'll be crucial here because of the narrowness of that, uh, entryway into the court.
Any other questions, any other concerns?
No, I mean, it would require
I applaud the resident.
What's, right.
Go ahead, Andy.
Uh, I apply, applaud the resident for doing this correctly, trying to get a permit. I know there, at least there is no record of other properties that have parking on the top, no record that it was permitted. I guess we're just looking if there's a way, any exception here. Um, the property is a challenge. But again, the village, um, has to be sure it's not liable or a future resident. Let's say it becomes disrepair and a future resident says, I didn't ask for that there. And besides, it's not on my property. That's a village problem. So I think we have to avoid that, but it it would be nice if there was some way we could work it out with the residents, but
Based on the history and open point
I'm not sure how.
Designed the streets the way they were and some of the other areas that are in there and the uniqueness of, you know, in the winters and that. I have no issues with as long as attorney Schuster had wrapped up something that resolves the village from liability and whether, you know, future residents that doesn't become liable to the village. And all the engineering standards are, that's appropriate that is still by building permits and being engineered and building inspector. But I have no issue with this. It's a unique situation up there.
I have a question for Kyle. Kyle, well, you know, with snow plowing, obviously on Crane Court, if if this parking pad was there and you're plowing Crane Court, my assumption is the snow goes on to this parking pad. And then the resident would still be responsible for clearing that off of the parking pad, correct?
Yeah, it would be the same as, uh, like a treated as a normal driveway, basically.
Right, where the snow piles up, if you're snow plowed, you know, if you snow blow a driveway, then you, you know, take it back out once you come by. I know also, you know, in the past, uh, some years ago, there was always issues with potentially, um, not by, not by, uh, just by chance hitting mailboxes and things. If if the cars are parked on that pad, do you, and from your from your experience, is there enough width on Crane Court for the width of plow to avoid hitting a car that might be parked on that pad?
Uh, yeah, it should be okay. Um, there's residents to, if you're looking at their house to the left of them, they have a parking pad with about three cars. It's it's a tight fit. Um, and I guess the only thing that would be of concern is just to have it wide enough for an ambulance to get through there. If an ambulance can get through and a garbage truck can get through there, a snowplow can get through there.
Thank you.
Snowplows, piles, this is
So, what action do we need to take tonight?
Not.
I mean, do we need to table this to look at legal ramifications so there's a clear understanding between the resident and the village?
I, we have attorney Schuster draft. I mean, I was gonna say, what action do we need to take? Is there, we want to take a poll to see what the consensus, consensus of the board?
Is the resident willing to pay for this expense?
See what they should.
Was it that they submitted something here where they're asking them to do the work?
Right, but as it's been pointed out, they get to provide the elevations or the tie downs.
I guess we want to look for a consensus of the board, whether or not we should move forward, assuming, is that what you're looking for, Ed?
Well, yeah, yeah. It it seems like, um, there's a few areas that need to be looked into.
I I have no issues and I agree that the person, that the resident should pay for the agreement and the attorney fees for that, so. And then obviously they need a building permit for this and they, you know, they paid for the engineering cost too, right, that are, that are for now, so. If of all that happens, I have no issue for it. I vote approve it.
Okay, now a motion from Nemec to approve this, if all those items fall into place.
I think you said proceed with it.
Proceed with it. Well, then he said he
What what are you looking for? Do you want a motion to proceed with this with the those considerations?
Yes.
That's my motion. You got that, Tony? You're really good at that.
Motion is proceed with this process, allowing the residents to build the parking pad on Crane Court as described, long as the conditions heighten the engine Long as the conditions hide the engineering on the agreement all.
And and a building permit.
And a building permit.
Engineering permit. This will be an engineering permit, not building.
An engineering permit.
And the costs are covered by the resident with the engineering.
And the resident understands that their expenses are on them. And these expenses are on them. So will this be brought up with the board again? Uh, it will be brought over the agreement, but
Right.
Before its final lot.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to get at. It's
Yeah, exactly.
Right, there should be a written agreement. We need engineering clearance. Uh, probably some more detailed drawings, Mr. Steel, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and and then that way the description of it is much more definite.
I don't want to put the cart before the horse.
No, no, no. And then that all will be brought before the board.
Okay, yes. So is this just going to be, is this a motion or is this just a consent?
A motion.
A motion from
We made a vote.
Mr. Thor and second. Okay, any other questions or concerns about this process? Yes, Andy?
Uh, so along with what Jeff mentioned. Uh, Ms. Detmer also mentioned currently that there was just going to be a I'll use the term of gravel coating as opposed to a black top.
That wouldn't be allowed.
Right, so part of, part of the requirement of what the resident, although we do have, you know, a document here that that they submitted talking about the wall and and the grading and limestone screening and so forth. That would have to be modified to not only meet what the engineering requirements are, but also then a proper coating of the surface.
Okay.
And all that would come once they res- we were
We'll all have to come back and we say, here you go.
Very good. Thank you for explaining.
Yep, you do it and we'll say yes. Okay, any other comments, questions, discussion? Name on the whole call for this. Mr. Moreno.
Hi.
Mr. Nemec.
Hi.
Mr. Adley.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Soren, firm the vote. Oh, sorry. Okay, my thanks for having us talk about that. All right, six permanent votes, no negative votes, a motion, so best. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, or anything else?
Uh, one other quick thing I heard from kids around the world regarding the equipment at Sabatino Park. They came and inspected it. They are not interested in it. They felt the decking was too far gone. Um, I have talked to Kyle and there's a possibility with some volunteer help. And with the assistance of Public Works, we could possibly take it down ourselves.
Get out.
Nothing else to report, Mr. President.
Well, they're talking about that. Why it's talking about that. Ed, have you heard anything about Sleepy Hollow Pool going forward?
Haven't heard a thing.
Might want to investigate that. What's that? Pool being closed, been rumored for years. Well, they say that the loss of water this year was phenomenal. I was talking to somebody the other day about it and they said, yeah, they said that they don't have intentions next year of opening. So I'm just wondering if that's true. I know we had an issue with it, like they had an issue with it about 10 years ago. And there's quite a bit of research done on it. And one of our residents, Mr. Ariana, helped him out on this. We tried to keep it in town. They did say that if it does get beyond repair, if we will close it. Yeah, they said it would be on repair now. So I don't know. You might want to follow up. Put a water pump on there on the ramp of park. That was their thoughts on eight or 10. Well, this was as of the other day, so. Seasons for pools all, we'll find out what happens in springtime, I'm sure. Okay, that's it, Mr. Harney?
That's it, sir.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, finance, George.
We have a, we schedule a finance meeting to go over the audits for twenty twenty-two and we just performed. And Eugene, if I'm correct, we'll have it by next Wednesday?
I haven't heard anything otherwise.
Okay, so it's the fourteenth from one to three here in the village. It's a finance meeting and that's why we're talking about that too, just on the finance. And I've had been what on now as a trustee for a year and a half now or two years and being chairman of the finance committee has given me a chance with Eugene to delve in and take a look at the village's finance. And I think many people that come into the room here, you know, come in with some very valid concerns and I agree with them, but uh, I would also say that you need to look at the village's finances and see what keeps us above water. But one of the things I heard tonight though too was something about a $5,000 payment was made by uh, the developer that's developing this land. Well, being on the finance committee and talk with Eugene, this has been brought up at several meetings over the last six months to eight months since the beginning of the year. As we have some opportunity for for two or three opportunities in the village. One of the things that it takes is going to uh, planning and zoning and also legal to view these and to get their uh, to get their feedback. And there's a lot involved, especially with legal. And if you've been at some meetings in the past, you'll see that I voiced this numerous times. Uh, one of the things I was adamant about, I said, if we're going to do this, I said, who's paying for this? I said, if a developer comes into this village and wants to look at something and we have to incur costs. I'm not paying for that. Where the village isn't going to pay for that. That's going to come from the actual individual that's applying for the permitting, developing. And that's exactly where those monies came from. That was monies that were provided by the potential individual that's developing that plot or whatever it is. So nothing comes to the village for free. I mean, there's rationale behind that and it's all valid. And if you look at our legal costs, you'll find out that they're not cheap. And along with our uh, planning and zoning code and all that, none of that comes cheap. And also, just one other thing, I worked for a major company my whole career and before I left and retired, maybe three years ago. A market analysis was done. And it was done specifically for Spring Hill Mall. And as you know, they had a lot of anchors there. And I think many of you may know what a market analysis is, where they look at it. Well, something cropped up out of that that I never heard before, or as it would refer to. But the Carter from twenty-five to Randall Road was considered a dead Carter. I don't know if you're aware of what that means. But it means just what it says it is. It means it's dead, that no retailer, nobody's going into that Carter right now because there's no return on the investment. So if you look since then, Macy's has left, Sears has left. Carson's is gone. Uh, Penny's left a while ago. You've got Coles hanging on by a string. And the mall has been sold. Uh, but the anchors, meaning the buildings, the actual buildings, Sears, Macy's, Carson's, and then we're in have not been sold because they are owned by the companies. That land is owned by Transformco, which is Sears. It's owned by Macy's, the LLC that owns them, the same with Carson's. So as we look at development, you have to look at all that. And I'm just saying that just to be very realistic and very honest. I mean, when I saw that, what that was classified as, it shocked the living daylights out of me because I've lived here over 30 years now. And I figure, wow, so, you know, I mean, the the village has to realistically look at everything. But I mean, take a look at it. I mean, from a realistic perspective, look at Spring Hill, which is our biggest entity right there and look what's in it and look what happened to Best Buy and look what happened to Target. So I just want to let you know that we do look at all the facts. Since I've been on this board, I have seen discussions with every one of us. Some I like, some I don't like, but that's, you know, that's all part of it though. But this board, believe me, works for this village and to say that they don't is is a fallacy. I mean, they look at what's best for the village and all. But yes, we are landlocked. We can't expand. But we've got to look at what the opportunities are. Nothing's finalized, but I'm just giving it the end of nutshell. Yes. Okay. But that was the part of the finance that I'd like to talk about because I heard the $5,000. And I just hope people don't think that was $5,000 given to the village. That has been documented. It's
escrow account.
It's an escrow account and believe me, I I follow that with Eugene all the time. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, George. Okay, next item, water and sewer, Mr. Nemec.
Uh, no report, thanks, right?
Gee, two years and you've got no report? Thank you, Joe.
Good report.
Uh, police and public safety and Mr. Yeah.
A couple of things. Unfortunately, it was a busy week for our police, unfortunately. Uh, fortunately, I would like to thank the chief and all that everyone in the department for the work uh, that they do keeping our village safe. They do a fine and outstanding job. And I appreciate them every day that they walk up to a car that they know what's inside of that car and look in faces. So greatly appreciate the chief and thank you for that. Uh, have some new things under new business, but like to bring up to try to get ahead of Halloween hours uh, coming up this year. Halloween is on a Monday, the thirty-first. Uh, I would like to make a motion that we adopt Halloween hours from three to seven P M. Uh, this is the same time.
Next meeting?
Next meeting. What what's your proposal? That we make the Halloween hours three to seven P M.
Clark, put that on.
I'm trying to get ahead of the motion. Um, it'll be listed on agenda for next meeting.
No problem.
For action. I have nothing further at this time. Chief, could I have anything to add?
I'm just married around the Special Olympics earlier, um, the top on top and just to give her a big update. We raised between top on top and then the polar plunge, which a couple of us did jump in late. We raised so far $2,954 for special. It's very, very proud of the department and small department and we do some heavy lifting. So very proud of the guys who worked there. Thank you.
Nothing further.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Thank you, James. Uh, also, one quick item, uh, the chief did include uh, some reading material in the packets for future on employee assistance programs, E A Bs. Like y'all to peruse that and be ready to have a discussion on that coming up. Okay, buildings and environment, Mr. Thor.
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
Mark, uh, building and zoning, Mr. Moreno.
Just wanted to make a comment. I know my name was brought up during public comments. And I just want to make sure that if I'm thinking incorrectly, please, any member of the board, correct me. But as far as I know, the original planning and zoning meeting that was held was to simply change the sentences, the wording that would potentially allow a use or any property or building. I was once on the planning and zoning commission. And I was on the planning and zoning commission when Matt Cramo was approached to build Sleepy Hollow. And we changed the planning and zoning to allow a use for auto dealership. So when we do those things, we're just allowing something to potentially happen. Whether or not an individual has given any money to the village to begin the process. The village board ultimately that will come that will be a public hearing, that person will submit documentation, what they want to do, how they want to do it. So there is no final decision on any open property within the village of Sleepy Hollow. There is a lot of community uh, information that's out there. Uh, I also look at the Friends of Sleepy Hollow Facebook page and the new Sleepy Hollow Facebook page, which I was surprised the new one was created. And and I appreciate village residents engaging and being active. But I also want to make sure that there is no final decision made yet. And and things can change, so don't, uh, now remember to phrase it. Uh, allow the village board to look at all the opportunities and allow the village board to uh, weigh all the opportunities, both comments from the public. Uh, decisions that a village force to make to maintain Sleepy Hollow for the future and and that we all live in a village that we want to be happy and proud to live in. So and I'll ask my fellow trustees, is there anything I said that was incorrect? I'd be happy to be told I misspoke. Okay. And as I've said, we're a few people, my phone number's published. Uh, I've given my phone number out to certain individuals. Uh, I am retired, I, you know, so I'm always around. If you ever want to reach out to me, please do. Happy to speak to you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Okay, going into all business, whole business, active military discount for vehicle registration.
Um, to, I thought this is to date, we have not had any active military personnel requesting to use this discount. However, it's all, it's been in the ordinance and it's on our paperwork. And it was basically tied to the same discount as the senior citizen discount. When we changed the senior citizen discount and neglected to also include the military discount. And so what I'd like to do is rectify that by having the military discount match exactly what the senior discount was. Okay, 25% of reduction or two powers maximum. This would also alleviate some of the problems with programming it with Cartograph. It is a little bit advanced and we have multiple different things. It simplifies everything, probably.
Have we ever anybody applied for? Because that was something Jim Lade had put in. I would have made a big deal about it when he first became chief and updated things that were never in the code for the five years before that. We just want to sunset that just to keep things simpler for the state and the paperwork. And I know every time I talk to Wendy, she's struggling to get all that information on the registration.
Yeah, that's it.
I I have, you know.
From Wendy, we have never had anyone apply for a registered discount.
So we just sunset that. I have no issue with that.
Motion to sunset?
I don't think that's the motion. Yeah, what motion does to to eliminate the eliminated. It's never been used.
Okay, so motion on the floor, one second. Moved by Nemec, seconded by DiAtly to eliminate the active military discount for vehicle registration fees in going to some dollars. Due to the fact that historically, we've never had any one.
When did Chief Lade first come here? What?
Two thousand twelve.
So over 10 years we've had no requests. There's nothing about the discount. It's just about the paperwork and otherwise. And they said Wendy's always struggled to jam all that information on the sheet.
But based on what, based on what Eugene just said, he was looking at potentially matching it to the current senior discount. Is that correct?
Right.
And would that, would that, um, would that make it easier for Wendy to manage now?
Either way, it would be fine.
Either way, eliminating it completely or changing it.
Completely would, you know.
Issue with space on the form.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, he would say was, you know, a couple of words on the form.
Oh, why have they known this? I'm a veteran. I haven't seen.
You know, they
Attack and duty only.
Not even reserved.
You know, veterans, then we find a problem. I don't think you're going to find any active duty military living here.
No.
That's been it.
I'm not going back in.
Much less being able to afford a car. I was on active duty. I should have. Okay.
So.
So it's moved and seconded to eliminate
Which has never been used.
Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none. Walk off, please. Mr. Thor. Mr. Thor. Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Adley.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Moreno.
Nice.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Five affirmative and one negative, the motion so carries, we will eliminate the active duty military discount on vehicle registration. Okay. And that old business is taken care of, uh, new business. The Halloween is jumping up real quick. Burn pile opening scheduled.
I asked, uh, the clerk to put that on and, uh, I was gonna make a motion to, um, open the burn pile um, uh, September, I know it's earlier than the past, but I was gonna say opening it, uh, September nineteenth is a Monday to allow two additional weeks. I think in the past, it's always been October first to the Saturday before.
The, the Friday before.
Friday before. Um, I had a few residents say, you know, they were cutting down some trees, they'd like to move it. Um, I think last year we made a special exception because we had some weather that came through.
Two years ago.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. I know what Kyle's feelings are on it. Um, if we were to move it up, but that was why I wanted to have just have a discussion on it.
I've seen a lot of down trees around too, and I, I went, you know, we've had some of that storm, we can actually probably open it up now, I don't know if we can. We had, we had some issues in the path when it was open year round and I think.
Well, we opened it early, it got full.
Yeah, that was open year round, I believe the fire department approached it and said it was getting too big, and so that's when I believe President Figg we made this decision now, so we, I, I think with that in mind, Anthony, I agree a hundred percent, there's some people playing down trees and that stuff.
Mr. Plalenger, you got a position on opening that today or tomorrow?
Fine with me, open her up.
I, I will say that I've had many inquiries on when it was gonna be open.
Let's, let's just do it. The, the motion, Anthony?
So, I made a motion to, uh, open the burn pile, uh, effective, uh.
Nine P M, September seventh, two thousand and one.
That, that should give us a couple days. No, no. Yeah, that's fine, open up the burn pile at Kyle's convenience. And that we put it in the news, uh, on the website.
What was that?
Give us a convenient date for you to open the burn pile.
Tomorrow morning.
Okay. Nine P M, September seventh, twelve hours late. Okay, that's the motion. Opening the burn pile, September seventh.
Closing it.
Closing it, October twenty-ninth.
When's the Halloween? Monday, Monday, the thirty-first. Yeah, I know, but when's the service club doing their? Probably being, uh, their on Saturday, twenty-second.
Uh, twenty-ninth.
Are they gonna do it that weekend or they go to, do they, is it one night you're gonna do it?
They do it the la- the Saturday before Halloween.
That's the twenty-ninth before.
That'd be the twenty-ninth.
We want to close at the twenty-seventh to give Kyle time to do it on Friday, clean everything out for him. Kyle, why don't you try to even clean it out?
Uh, usually I do it, uh, the Friday before that Saturday burn, um, because even if I close it, there are people that will drag it through the, uh, fire department parking lot. So it really doesn't matter.
So say it twenty-seventh.
That's fine.
Yeah, twenty-seventh.
Okay, we'll open it, the, the motion is to open the burn pile from September seventh through October twenty-seventh, pause of business.
Yeah, and remind people, no commercial dumping or large logs that don't burn. But that, once again, I, I will go to George, this, it's a significant cost to the village for Kyle's time and this, hoping of the logs that don't burn, but
Really?
I don't know. Second.
Okay, so I'm, okay. All right. Moreno makes the motion to open the burn pile on the seventh and close it on the twenty-seventh, Mr. Thor in second. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call please, Mr. Moreno.
Hi.
Mr. Adley.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, a motion so carries. Hey, Ed, you're gonna have to use your bet lighter.
Okay.
You hardly see the. Okay, no business, uh, burn pile is taken care of, and the next item is the permission for the Knights of Columbus to sell Tootsie Rolls at the intersection of Sleepy Hollow and Grove Runle once.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we allow the Knights of Columbus to do their Tootsie Roll fundraiser on September twenty-third, twenty-fourth at the Sleepy Hollow Road intersection.
Second.
Mr. Harney. By DeAtley, seconded by Mr. Harney to offer, uh, allow the Knights of Columbus to, uh, fundraise at the intersection of Sleepy Hollow and Grove Runle on the twenty-second and the twenty-third, according to the hours listed in the notice.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. Yeah.
They're doing it five days?
Three, three.
Yeah, three days.
Three days, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth?
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay. Thanks, I have three days, it's drawn for Friday. Okay, any further comments, questions, or discussion?
Just to point out to everyone, they do supply us with a strategic insurance and they list us as insured, so we are totally covered, um, if anything were to happen.
All right. Roll call please, Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Adley.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Moreno.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, a motion so passes, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the next item under new business. There is a request to extend sixteen hours of vacation time for Officer Schwartz. Officer Schwartz needs a couple of odd months here to get things worked out for a couple more days that he's got left. This is carryover from twenty-twenty-two.
Well, it's because of his anniversary date. Yeah, he'll just have to carry over about a month and then I can get him the, the two days off.
I move that we approve the extension of sixteen hour vacation time to, for Officer Schwartz.
Second.
Moved by Nimitz, seconded by Thor to authorize the carryover of sixteen hours by, of vacation by Officer Schwartz. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Adley.
Hi.
Mr. Moreno.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, a motion so passes, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, any other new business coming for the board? Any new business before the board?
I'm going to agree to her.
DeAtley, okay.
Second.
Moved by DeAtley, seconded by Thor to adjourn. Roll call please, Mr. Moreno.
Hi.
Mr. Adley.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Thor. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, we are so adjourned, we will see you on the twenty-ninth.
Good night, gentlemen.
Yeah. All right. You know, or you got. Five, three. Okay, all data blocked. We're all. Guys. Yeah. The other question's out of here now. But there was an odd, all lengthy, I mean, I was the other seat, but you're already out of the way.